This is meeting of March. I can't have my glasses on, I can't order. Like to welcome, welcome everyone here tonight. My voice is gone, so please bear with me tonight. First, we have one of my favorite bishops in the house, Bishop Slater. He's a downtown property owner and a bishop, so that's a lot of good things going on. Uh, he's gonna do the invocation, and then we have Boy Scout Troop Two from St. Paul Church. Once he does the invocation, they're gonna come up and help lead us in the pledge. If everybody would please stand. Bishop Slater?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we can come with the meeting of the minds. Father, we ask you, Lord, to cover this great city, Lord. Father, we ask you, Lord, to touch upon every member of the city council, whether it's their attorney or even the city manager. Father, we thank you for them. We ask you to protect them, to protect them in their minds, God, that they'll lead us in the right direction, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. All right, if Troop Two, if y'all would come up and help us. Come right across the front, right here. That means, come on, let's go. I don't see a lot of enthusiasm coming up here now. There you go. It's getting better. It's getting better. There's some good smiles going on. How are y'all?
Place your flag. Yeah, place your flag.
All right, y'all ready? All right, you're gonna start us off in the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Thank you, young man.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have roll call vote.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rowley.
Here.
President.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Seagman's called in, and he is sick tonight and won't be with us. Next, we have the minutes for approval for the regular meeting of February 5th, 2018, and the work session.
Move to a dot. Second.
Any discussion? All five raise your right hand. Pose same. Motion carries. Presentations, we have the Gold Star Award. Who? God damn it. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to present to you tonight the February 2018 Star Award, and the purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contributions to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The Star evaluation should specifically focus on job-related outputs and accomplishments in customer service, problem-solving, and teamwork. At this time, I would like the nominees to come forward to present the February 2018 Star Award.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Well, y'all gonna stand back there, y'all gonna come up here. Let's go.
You don't have trouble.
You act like you hadn't done this before.
I have, I have. Good evening. Nice to see y'all. Um, I would, I'm Captain Lerner, for those that aren't aware. I'm on B shift at the police department. This is Officer Sacher. Jacob came to the police department about two years ago. I got him about a year ago on my shift, and he, along with one of our other coworkers, which is Tanner Smith, and Lead Major Dean's in the background as well, are here to support him, and I appreciate that. Um, the others would be here from the shift, but we got off my shift this morning. Uh, I have to say, um, I struggled a little bit with this Star Award only because of the nature somewhat. Jacob and Tanner in the back, they are two great community policing assets. Anybody that follows our Facebook page probably recognizes them. They love playing with the public, and they like to have a good time with the citizen, and, uh, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure y'all do too. But they are also able to change those hats very quickly when it comes to serious mode, and, and take care of business, and what's, what's expected of them. And, and the reason I nominated him was because on this evening, uh, we had a female that had a, a health condition, an unexpected health condition arise, and, uh, we quickly went from playing and enjoying the public to, on their way to, an unresponsive young female. And when Officer Sacher arrived, she was there with her, uh, other half, and she was not breathing. She was unresponsive. And it was sudden, it was unexpected, and without any hesitation, Officer Sacher jumped in, performed CPR, had no problem with CPR for quite a while. Sometimes that seems like hours waiting on rescue to get there when it may only be minutes, but Fire Department comes and supports us often, which they did, and, uh, Jacob was able to do that. He was able to assist the Fire Department and continue for quite a while. Uh, he quickly changed hats in the middle of this and went to, uh, a kind of console mode because the, the female's other half was outside, and he was extremely, extremely distraught, much older than Jacob. Obviously, Jacob is young, but he quickly turned hats and was able to console that gentleman. He quickly turned hats again, was able to go back in the mode to assist with this female, and, uh, I just felt like it was worth a recognition for him. I know that's something that's expected of us, but it's still different when you're expected to do that, you know, on site, and you perform it as well as he did at his age. Um, my struggle was because she unfortunately did not make it, so I didn't want to highlight this situation, but still respect her. I will say that the family member that he counseled even reached out to him after this, which says a lot for him, and, um, and I appreciate him. We have a lot of great officers, and, and I appreciate him for, for what he did. So I, I'm glad for you all recognizing him tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
So you know the deal, right? You have a smile, and act like you wanna be standing next to me. And I would shake your hand, but I don't know if I got out of your cold tub.
Hey.
Hey.
Sir?
Would you get back up there for me?
Yes, sir.
You know, that's hard.
Yes, sir.
Can you get that camera in there? You gotta look professional.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm smiling.
You wanna get one of yours? You want Jennifer to do it? You wanna do it?
No. I don't want to be in here.
You might, you might go make it.
Okay.
Jacob's looking at himself. But I can't, I can't much longer.
Thank you.
I do wanna take a minute to thank you, but I wanna tell y'all, we have some really great police doing a lot of really great things in this community. We're focusing more and more on community policing. We're getting more and more into community. We're trying to be more and more inclusive in all our policing, and these guys do, are doing some really good work. We have more things to do. We're continuing to try to grow our police department. They're always over task and under resourced, I can tell you. We're, we've done a lot to improve it, but we're not what we need to be. But anytime you see a policeman, if you were thinking for what they do, it'd be really good, because they do really did great work. So congratulations. Oh, here's your, you might want this too.
Thank you.
But that's the good part of it.
Hold on. All right. Thank you.
All right, so next we have, uh, public hearing, and our first one is Z218, MC Morgan and Associates. And I need to ask to be excused from this one because I have an interest in this. So I need a motion to excuse me from this hearing.
Moved. Moved to excuse. Say her name.
Any discussion? All five raise your right hand. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and leave, and Councilman Ham, if you will, you take over. I'm taking my water with me.
Good evening, Councilman. Item Z218 is MC Morgan and Associates. The property is located on the west side of Kyler Best Road between Glenda's Drive and Oxford Boulevard. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from Office and Institutional One to R6 Residential Conditional District to limit the use of the property to 80 apartment units. The item, or the property in question is highlighted on the map on the screen in the hatched area. The applicant has requested a waiver of the site plan requirement at the time of rezoning. If the rezoning is approved, full development plans will have to be approved prior to issuance of any building permits. The area in question is 6.2 acres and is surrounded by zoning to the north, Office and Institutional One, to the south, Office and Institutional One, to the east, Office and Institutional One, and to the west, R9 Residential. The property is currently vacant farmland. As indicated previously, the requested R6 Conditional District is requested to limit the use of the property to 80 apartment units. Development plan approval will be required separately. The city's adopted plan, uh, Compliments and Land Use Plan designates the property for office and institutional uses. City water and sewer lines are not available to the subject property at this time. This is an aerial photography of the property in question. Here are some site photos. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on April 2nd, 2018. Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for the Z218, uh, McMorgan and Associates, uh, zoning request. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against? If so, come forward, give your name and address, information to the clerk.
How you doing? My name is Craig Stone with MC Morgan and Associates. Uh, wanted to, uh, thank you guys for consideration and present myself in case there were any questions for the 80 units and the investment in the community.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else desires to speak for or against? State, state your name and information to the clerk, please.
Uh, sure. My name is Danny Remington.
Address.
Uh, 114 Michelle Dawn Drive.
I didn't get your name, ma'am.
Danny Remington.
Okay, thank you.
The concern that I had was that, um, I live in Glenda's Point, which is across the street from this site, um, and the, I didn't find out about this rezoning until Friday, um, and when I called, um, Planning and Zoning this morning to find out how information was provided to the people that live around this area, they said that they, um, mailed notices to people within 100 feet of the site, which would not include, um, Glenda's Point, Old Farm, and a few other apartment complexes that are less than a quarter mile from the rezoning site. Um, and then, um, I'm, I'm basically just that, there's a lot of people that didn't hear about this that have a vested interest in it. Um, I, I wanna, I drafted a petition and have had, um, I think about 30 signatures from people around the neighborhoods. We only had about an hour to get signatures, um, of people who wanted to come here tonight but couldn't be here, and as I understand it, with this being the only public hearing, they wouldn't have an opportunity in the future to, um, come forward and speak about it. So we're just wanting to get another public hearing and get more information out.
Yes, sir. Can you hang up? Well, you have these two, the planning permission.
Do you? Do you need copy of these? You want a copy of this? For your record? I think it would be best. So can you get a copy somewhere?
Yes, sir. State your name and address.
My name is David Remington.
Hold on a second. You haven't listened? Okay, go ahead. Address.
I'm Danny's Remington, uh, I'm a husband. Same address, 114 Michelle Dawn Drive with Glenda's Point. Um, so yeah, our main issue is, uh, we'd like to table this issue. Uh, I don't think there's enough, uh, time on public awareness. Um, you know, the 100 feet within the property, I think that's, you know, it, we're close, the entrance to our development is roughly 100 feet from where this rezoning is gonna take place. Um, everyone in the development's concerned about it, and, uh, you know, I realize the procedure calls for it, and add in the paper, I think that's a little outdated. I don't know how many people read the paper, and then no one, of course, got a mailed notice. I know that's your procedure, within 100 feet, I understand that. Uh, I also, um, you know, I would like to get some more information on the need for this zoning change, and also, um, we need, there's already a traffic issue along Kyler Best Road and the intersection of New Hope, uh, so, you know, I propose that a traffic study be completed. I don't know, I didn't hear any data on that tonight. Um, so, uh, that's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission will take consideration. The Planning Director is sitting here taking notes, so, uh, your concerns will be discussed in the planning meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Jacob Smith, 105 Christopher Allen Drive, also in the Glenda's Point subdivision. Don't know that I have any new concerns, uh, just mainly that we weren't notified. We're kinda last minute brought up here to support, uh, kind of a delay, so we'd have more time to, uh, for the neighbors to get together and really think about this. Uh, my biggest concern just living there is the traffic on Kyler Best is awful. Not all the time, but in the morning and at nighttime, it's already tremendously heavy. Um, not saying I would oppose, uh, the apartments going in, but I'd really, really like to see the roads there, uh, addressed beforehand. That's my personal concern.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, sir. My name is George Quinn. I live at 1505 Sunset Drive. Um, all the concerns have already been addressed about it, just giving us some more time to get some information on what's going on, uh, kinda figure out the layout along with the traffic, uh, and such for Glenda's Point and for Old Farm, something here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? If not, thank you, uh, Director.
And we are making copies for Mayor Perdido, so they'll be back in just a minute.
She's already got a copy.
Okay, great.
Mayor, come in.
All right, uh, our next is item D, Z318 Berkeley Realty Holdings.
Item Z318 is Berkeley Realty Holdings. The property is located on the northeast corner of Berkeley Boulevard and Langston Drive. The applicant's requesting a rezoning to allow the addition of a car wash operation as an allowable use within the General Business Conditional District Zone. On March 6th, 2017, council approved the rezoning for the subject property along with two additional adjacent lots to the north from our, um, excuse me, from O&amp;I-1 and R16 to General Business Conditional District. At that time, the use for the property allowed for the construction of a multi-tenant commercial center with separate approval required for development plans. Conceptual plans were displayed at the time of the rezoning, which included a multi-tenant commercial building on three lots with access from both Berkeley Boulevard and Langston Drive. Only the two southern lots are now included within this request and are indicated on the map on the screen in the, the hatched area. The area in question is 0.85 acres and is surrounded, um, with zoning to the north shopping center, to the south, R16 Residential, to the east, General Business Conditional District, and O&amp;I-1 Conditional District, and to the west, O&amp;I-1 Conditional District. Both lots are occupied by existing homes, and as indicated, the applicant requesting the addition of a car wash as an allowable use for the property. The city's adopted land use plan designates the property for commercial development. A site plan has been submitted, this is, excuse me, this is aerial photography of the A site plan has been submitted and indicates a proposed 3,500 square foot building placed parallel to Berkeley Boulevard with full driveway access from Langston Drive. An exit-only driveway is proposed along Berkeley Boulevard and will require approval from NC DOT. Hours of operation are being proposed at Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, with four employees expected to be associated with the car wash. Water and sewer lines are available to serve the property. Grading and drainage plans are under review and are subject to staff approval prior to issuance of a building permit. The proposed one-bay automated car wash requires a total of one space per two employees, plus an area capable of stacking two car, cars per bay. The site plan shows six parking spaces along with 19 spaces dedicated as vacuuming stations. Adequate stacking of cars is available as vehicles will access the site from Langston Drive and travel west along the rear of the property to funnel into two travel lanes before accessing the one-bay car wash. The applicant is requesting a modification of the interconnectivity requirement due to the proposed traffic circulation for the site. The submitted landscape plan indicates a 10-foot Type A buffer along the northern property line and a 20-foot Type C buffer, uh, along the eastern property line adjacent to the residentially developed property. A six-foot wide, uh, wood privacy fence is being, excuse me, six-foot tall white privacy fence is being proposed along this, along with supplemental landscaping to allow the reduction of the opaque buffer by 50%. Street trees and vehicular surface buffer shrubs will be installed along Langston Drive as well as Berkeley Boulevard. Five-foot sidewalks have been shown along Berkeley Boulevard and Langston Drive. The proposed dumpster location will be screened as required by the Unified Development Ordinance with gates for proper access to the dumpster. The applicant is requesting a modification for the dumpster to be located within the Type A 10-foot landscape buffer. The proposed building elevations have been submitted, and the exterior of the structure will consist of glass panels and a combination of split-faced masonry block and stacked stone. This is the elevation you will see along Berkeley Boulevard and Langston Drive. And this is the rear of the site. This is site photos of the property. Any questions for staff?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, this is a public hearing, Z318 Berkeley Realty Holdings. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to allow the addition of a car wash operation as an allowable use within the General Business Conditional District. Would anyone like to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Okay, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we're gonna move to Z418 E Park LLC.
Z418 E Park LLC, the property is located on the south side of Graves Drive between Mallory Street and Berkeley Boulevard. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from shopping center to general business. To the north, you have general business. To the south, you have general business conditional district. To the east, general business, and general business also to the west. The property is currently vacant. A conditional district has not been requested, therefore, no use for the property has been specified. The general business zoning district would permit a wide variety of commercial uses. The developer requests the zoning change in order to allow for more marketability in attracting an investor. Depending on the use proposed and whether all UDO requirements can be met, review and approval of development plans for the site may be required. Our comp plan does, um, land use plan does show commercial for this location. This is aerial photography of the site and photos of the site. At this time, there is no, uh, necessary action. The Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on April the 2nd.
Any questions? All right, if not, this is a public hearing for Z418 E Park, and the applicant's requesting a zoning change from shopping center to general business. Would anyone like to speak? Anyone like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing and move to the next, which are our street closings.
Item F is street closings from Hemlock Street, shown on the map, from Ella Street to its terminus. Marion Street from William Street to its terminus. And Adele Street from Annabelle Street to its terminus. On March 6th, 2017, the city council asked the staff to investigate closing a number of unimproved street sections within the city limits. The petition street closings have been forwarded to the Fire Police, Engineering, and Public Works Departments for their review. No objections to any of the closing have been submitted. The engineering department has indicated that utility easement should be retained over those sections of Marion Street and Hemlock Street if those right, right-of-ways are closed. If the street sections are closed, ownership of each right-of-way will be split equally between the adjoining property owners. A resolution of intent was advertised in a newspaper for four consecutive weeks. Each street section was posted on both ends, and all adjacent property owners were notified of the public hearings by certified mail. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for city council on April the 2nd.
Any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing for street closings of a portion of Hemlock Street, Marion Street, and Adele Street. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? See, and now we'll close this public hearing, and we will excuse our hard-working Planning Commission, and thank y'all for coming tonight. And when is the meeting? Next Monday, it's at 7 o'clock here. So the Planning Commission meets next Monday at 7 o'clock. If anybody would like to come and hear what they say, you're more than welcome to come. It's a public meeting. You can't talk, but you can listen. So just let everybody know that. All right, thank you. Y'all are welcome to stay. Um, next, we have the designation of properties as historic landmarks. What?
I was living on Hemlock Street when I was in the other sheet.
Oh, well, you, well, come on, you come on, let's talk. I'm sorry, I didn't know there was anybody in the other room.
Oh, it's cool.
I'm not a very adept mayor, if I didn't know that. Well, forgive me.
No problem.
Okay.
Danielle Baptiste, I live at 501 East Mulberry Street, but I'm here representing Dillard Academy Charter School.
Okay.
Um, Hemlock Street is right behind the charter school, and I had a couple concerns about the closing of the street. One is the shared ownership. Um, we, the school has one side of the street.
Right.
There's a private company that has the other side of the street, and my concern is shared, trying to figure out some sort of arrangement with a private company that's trying to sell that lot, as a matter of fact, um, to get, that's the way we get our buses in and out of the school every day.
Okay.
So we have that concern. We also have the concern about the, um, the ditch, that there's like a city ditch, a large city ditch that runs on the end of the terminus of that street, and the city has been coming to cut the grass there, and we wanted to make sure that that remained intact even if the street closed, because, um, it's not on the school's side, but it's dangerous because it's really big and snakes come out of it.
Gotcha.
You know, it's had the grass.
Okay. Those are your only concerns?
Those are.
Can you give the, like, give the clerk your phone number, a way we can contact you, and that we'll get somebody to kinda check into this?
Okay.
And, and come, and talk back to y'all before we, um, do anything, okay?
All right.
So we'll play the commission.
Okay. Now we're gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna excuse the Planning Commission for sure, and thank y'all for coming, and we're gonna move on to designation of properties as historic landmarks. Are you doing that, Jennifer?
Item G is designation of properties as historic landmarks. The city of Goldsboro's historic district was certified by the National Park Service in 1985. The certification indicates that the district essentially meets national register criteria and that locally designated historic landmarks may be eligible for federal and state historic preservation tax credits. Landmark destination means the city recognizes a property as an important historic resource worthy of preservation. The city's UDO includes procedures that must be followed in order to allow for the designation or establishment of a historic landmark. Staff has, um, looked, and we've done inventory completed of the products, properties, report describing the significance of the building, structures, features, sites, and surroundings were, was prepared. Uh, the reports were sent to the State Historic Preservation Officer for review and comment. The Historic District Commission held their public hearing March 13th last week. City council is holding the public hearing tonight, March 19th, and, uh, upon approval or with approval, an ordinance is prepared for each property for designation, and upon adoption, owners receive the ordinances, and the city will file at the registered deeds of office. Downtown Goldsboro staff has been working with a developer interested in rehabilitating six historic properties that are currently vacant and in need of significant improvements. Those locations are 200 East Walnut Street, as you see on the site here, 204 East Walnut Street, 206 East Walnut Street, they're both on the screen, 139 and 135 West Walnut Street, and then on the first, I'm not sure what's happening. On this, um, slide, you also see 106 South John Street. On November the 20th, 2017, the city council authorized the mayor to sign agreements detailing plans for identifying incentives to allow the project to move forward. As part of the rehabilitation package, the developer proposes to utilize federal historic preservation tax credits. As indicated previously, locally designated historic landmarks may apply for and be eligible to receive these tax credits. Staff, along with the State Historic Preservation Office, has assembled documentation for each property which can be used when determining whether or not a site should be designated as a historic landmark, and has followed the enumerated procedures as listed in the UDO. At time of initial establishment of the historic district structures, were designated as either contributing or significant or non-contributing. Based on the national register standards, 71% of the structures within the district were deemed contributing or significant, and only 29% of the structures were listed as non-contributing. With these properties, you With these properties, you have 200 East Walnut Street is listed as significant structure, 204 East Walnut Street is also a significant structure, 206 East Walnut Street, a significant structure, 106 South John Street, listed as non-contributing structure, 139 West Walnut Street is in its significant structure, and then 135 West Walnut Street is a contributing structure. Prior to the public hearing, a notice was published in the newspaper for two successive weeks in accordance with the state law. All owners of the property within 100 feet of each subject site were notified of the upcoming public hearing by mail. In addition, each site was posted with a sign indicating that a public hearing was scheduled. The Historic District Commission, on March 13th, 2018, held a public hearing and recommended destination of all six properties as historic landmarks. It's by motion after the public hearing adopted ordinance designating the listed properties as historic landmarks. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, as far as our ordinance, we have to have a public hearing to propose or to make a landmark historic. So this is a public hearing to see if anybody would have any comments on making either of these six addresses that Jennifer just mentioned historic. Does anybody would like to speak? For or against? Anybody like to speak? Okay, if not, we're gonna close this public hearing, and we have a recommendation to make these six structures historic landmarks. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor, raise your right hand. Pose same. Motion carries. All right, so now we're gonna go to the public comment period. And the first folks were these fine ladies at Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. They sent me a letter and asked if they have extra time tonight, so let me clarify this. Tonight, there are several people in the audience that I feel sure want to speak, so I'm gonna be really strict that when it says three minutes, you need to sit down. I don't have to ask you to sit down, I don't have to beg you to sit down at three minutes, your time's up. So please sit down after three minutes, so we don't have to engage in that conversation. But the sorority has asked for additional time to do a presentation, and we have granted that. So the floor is yours, ladies.
Good evening, members of the city council.
Good evening.
I'm Linda Farmer, president of the Goldsboro Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Founded in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta is an international organization of college-educated women who focus on helping our communities in five areas: mental and physical health, economic development, international awareness and involvement, social action, and education. Since 1965, here in Wayne County, Goldsboro Alumni Chapter has worked and continues to work in our community. Goldsboro Alumni Chapter contributes to the empty stocking fund. We help to stock the Salvation Army pantry in the fall. We have joined with Habitat for Humanity and Women's Build. We have sponsored a Healthy Hard Walk. We award academic scholarships, and we work in so many other areas with other groups in Wayne County. This evening, it is our concern for the education and safety of our Wayne County children that brings us here before you. At this time, I ask Mrs. Alicia Artist to come forth to state our concern, and I thank you so much for allowing Goldsboro Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, to be on tonight's agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening. The members of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, and I, as a parent of a fourth-grade student whose classes are in one of the mobile units at Tommy's Road Elementary, are coming forward to ask the Goldsboro City Council what the plans are for ensuring the safety of our children at Tommy's Road Elementary. According to the information printed in the Goldsboro News/Argus dated March 1st, 2017, December 27th, 2017, and March 5th, 2018, the distance from the school meets the redefined site distance requirement set by state law. The new law only requires ABC stores not be located within an unreasonable distance. This 5,000-square-foot building will have an entrance along Wayne Memorial Drive, which is directly in the traffic path to the school. This entrance has the potential to increase traffic congestion for patrons trying to exit the store parking, getting onto or trying to cross over onto Wayne Memorial Drive. We ask, one, for a prominent, non-scalable barrier between the school and the store, which would block visibility bidirectionally. We would also like the city to investigate the possibility of adding additional driveways and/or traffic patterns for the school to help alleviate the potential traffic congestion, which could lead to vehicular incidents. And in the event this ABC store has any of the burglary issues the Fremont store had, we ask for surveillance cameras and additional security. We would like to deter any potential threat from being on the school property, especially the playground area where the unlocked mobile classrooms are located and the children may be playing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
As a matter of information, and correct me, Jennifer, if I'm wrong, we've already had this site plan come before us, and we've already approved this site plan, so the site plan is approved as it is.
Yes.
So I think what we, all we can do today as a city is we can partner with you, we can talk to the school board, we can talk to the folks at the ABC Board, and as a group, try to come up with some things we can do to make it better. And I think we're certainly willing to work and partner and try to do that, okay?
We appreciate that.
So we're glad to do that. But it has been approved.
Yes.
So I just want to be clear about that. Okay. All right, so with that, this is the public comment period. Anybody can may speak for up to three minutes. Now, look, there's a crowd. I know somebody wants to speak. Good evening, sir.
My name is Thomas Johnson, 1806 East Mulberry Street.
Yes, sir.
I've been told, and I sent an email to a couple of guys.
You said, good email.
Thank you. About, I had some questions about a proposed project at 1113 East Mulberry Street, which is a proposed shelter. I just wanted to say that I'd like to urge the council to make sure that they take, and the Planning Commission, that they take a look at the number of like or similar facilities that already exist in the 1,000 block to 1,300 block of Mulberry, Walnut, and Ash Street. This particular project, I believe there is already a facility at the 1,300 block of Ash Street, which is for substance abusers, and I believe that that is barely a tenth of a mile property line to property line to the proposed project. I can't remember the exact distance requirement, but I want to say it's a quarter mile. So I would ask that we look at the numbers of facilities already there, and that we make sure we're in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act and with the distance requirements through local ordinance.
And we thank you for your comments, and I will say, I would like to say two things to the whole Mulberry Street group, and I think some of them know, some might not know, just to be safe. But Anthony Goodson, who's the director, did call the city today, and he did say that they had put the Mary Casey Project on hold indefinitely while they explore other options. I don't know what that means, but I do know that we got that call today, and we take that to be that, you know, they're looking at other options. So I do tell you that. I do also tell you that when the Planning Commission is here, I think it's scheduled for the Planning Commission the next meeting in March, and they will, they will get all this, they'll look at special populations, they'll look at everything. So they'll look at all this before they make a recommendation to us. So you feel free to follow that as well.
All right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, good member.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
How are y'all today?
Good.
Hope you're good.
Okay, I'm Thomas Rice, M.L.F.L., American love for life, and I come before y'all today, one, to thank you for the opportunity for us to work the people that we work, with the Section 3 people around and everything. But I'm coming for you again to ask, to try to request something so we can keep this program going. I've been told that we're lacking funds and things of that sort. So I want to see, can, in some way that we can come together and then discuss and see what we can come up with, because it's very valuable. We have had one, two guys, two right, they graduate out of our thing, one working at Champion Mobile Homes and rock him out. They start him out for like $13 an hour, then we got another one that was put a butterball in the mix, about $12 an hour. I get a lot of guys come to me wanting help, because they hear us say, "Well, you helping us get jobs, you working us and getting us trained so we can get jobs." So I think it's a good thing, well, I know it's a good thing, and I'm trying to keep it going so that we can prosper and we can help the guys and give them something to do. That way, they won't allude to doing other thing that might cross the line of being planned, because I feel that there's a lot of it is where they have been overlooked because they have records or whatever, but then we got some highly skilled guys and people. So like I said, I'm coming before y'all today to see if we can continue this, find the funds so we can keep on working and do. I mean, there's a lot of things around the city that we could possibly do. I mean, we can pick up the trash out the dishes, move some of the debris in there so the water flow better. But I mean, you know, I'm just asking here before y'all today that we can sit down and see what we can do. Just don't close the door on it and do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, ma'am.
Councilmembers, my name's Matt Young. I own the property at 1109 East Mulberry Street and have for 12 years. I moved here about 15 years ago as a military transplant. I'm still here, and it's the longest I've ever lived anywhere, and the reason for that is because I love Goldsboro, and more importantly, I love Mulberry Street. That little area of Mulberry Street is really what Goldsboro is all about. The small-town charm, the bungalow-style homes, the sense of community, and the history is all right there. Every new person that comes in our squadron, I take them on a little drive down Mulberry Street, I talk about where Andy Griffith lived, and the sense of community that they see, the people walking up and down that peaceful road, and I tell them, "That's what Goldsboro is. You have come to heaven when you come to Goldsboro." So I'm here to ask that we protect that. I'm not going to speak against anything. I would love to have a battered-wounded shelter. What I'm gonna try and do is help the GHA find the best location for that shelter. That area of Goldsboro Street already has, or Mulberry Street, is already gone under a revitalization. People are putting money and time into the homes, fixing everything up, and trying to make the best pathway we can to our wonderful new downtown. I think the GHA has some funds and some money that could be used in a different location to help restore and bring some revitalization to a different area of town. It's not about that shelter, it's about any project that is that size and scope of a commercial quality, put on that corner in that small residential neighborhood, that I just don't think is the right fit, and I think that it would be, could change what is just the perfect setting for Goldsboro. So I have.
Mr. Young, I appreciate you coming, coming out, but there's definitely a need for women here, especially homeless and battered women in the city. There's no homeless shelter here for them. I was just talking to our community affairs director. We definitely need to find somewhere for these women to go. So, you know, I understand, you know, you think that that's a great neighborhood, you know, who's to say it would still not be a great neighborhood with those families having somewhere to go? But thank you.
Well, and I will volunteer my time. I talked to our office today, I'll do pro bono real estate work to help anybody on the GHA find a location that'll fit the scope and size of that project the best that we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else like to speak?
Thank you.
Mayor Allen, City Council. My name's Kevin Woodard. I reside at 1518 East Mulberry Street. I'm not here to say the same thing. We did send a petition, I hope all you got it. I did email it to the city clerk, included Mr. Broadway and Mayor Allen on there, about 120 signatures. And if everyone here that's speaking wants to stand up and sign a petition, just so you know the support that we have here, we are not against this use. There is a need for that facility in Goldsboro and other facilities as well. Really, what I'm here to speak about is more the technical aspect as far as maybe how a facility like this, anywhere inside the city, is really not conducive to some of these single-family neighborhoods. I mean, the proposed complex is a four-unit apartment complex, basically is what the plan showed. That's three two-bedroom units, one one-bedroom unit, it's a total of seven bedrooms. That can hold 14 people plus more if you have small children there legally. A facility of that size tends to take on a commercial nature. You get the four units, you're required to put in sprinkler systems, extensive parking, eight to 10 at a minimum. You know, then you got, you know, up to eight trashcans being rolled out on the street, and so it starts to feel more of a commercial nature than a residential feel. And like Matt and some of the other neighbors said, I think, you know, there is a need for it, and we're not against the use, and we think it's just maybe a better way to make sure it's designed properly with everything in mind. And I also like to tell the council to maybe really consider going back and looking at the R9 zoning, because R9 zoning does allow multifamily in that zoning, but as my understanding, the current project doesn't meet setbacks, a front yard and a side yard setback, which would have to be approved by the Planning Commission and, of course, by the council. We also feel that it's too close underneath the special population housing, that's too close to other facilities, so that would also go against the city's ordinance as well. But in the long run, and not just this project or anything else, we just didn't want to set a precedent or that anybody can come into single-family neighborhoods and make any development too harsh aesthetically, that really just don't fit in with the feel of the neighborhood. And I would see if the council and the Planning Commission would really take a good, hard look at the older part of Goldsboro, which a lot of it is pretty much R9 and R6, and maybe make multifamily either conditional use or some type of way we can at least have some say into how many people you can put on there, because as it is now, R9 states is multifamily. There is no limit to amount of people you can put in multifamily under the zoning. You're only limited to how much land you have and can your site plan meet approval. So in these small, older neighborhoods, I think it can be very intrusive, no matter who the tenant is, whether it's a private developer or any other use. So I would think, request, you guys, and maybe take a good, hard look at that in the future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? All right, Mr. Rice, are you coming to speak? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Charles Rice. Morning, Mayor, City Council. I will try to be brief with four things I'd like to bring your attention to. The first thing, I'm not sure whether you know about it or not, but it's called the North Carolina Opportunity Zones Program. This is an effort that was passed with the tax law back in December 27th, and all it does is it allows companies and rich corporations and individuals to take the capital gains tax that they have to pay and reinvest it into, reinvest it into underserved, low-income communities. And the governor is, has the power to submit 25% of 1,000 identified communities. That's 252 to the Treasury Department by April the 20th, and I'd just like to suggest to the city that we identify our communities, our opportunity zones, communities, and submit that to the North Carolina Department of Commerce. It doesn't take...
Who needs to submit that?
Excuse me?
Who needs to submit that?
Well, the city needs to do that. I can give you example of a city that's not in this state that did one, but the city needs to do that and just identify the opportunity zones. It's on a map, so you don't have to go searching or guess what these zones are. I could have done it myself, but I'm not a city employee, and I don't elect to represent the city in that part, but I did make personal comments on that site. Next thing I just wanted to bring up was Kalia. I think we need to make sure that when we purchase new things, whether it be cameras or equipment or anything, that it's going to be compliant with Kalia standards. And also, when we go out in the community and talk about crime prevention and community involvement, keep in mind that the package that we purchase does not include those standards. So it's not real good for our police department to come out and talk about community standards and what they're going to do if we don't, if we haven't bought the standards to support... and what they're going to do if we don't, if we haven't bought the standards to support that community policing block. But I don't have a whole lot of time to show you that, but take my word for it. It's not, it's not, that community policing is not included in the standard package that we purchase. City council meetings, I like to see a date and time that when city council meetings is going to be posted online. I've seen Eric Times up to five months, and I think that's kind of stretching it. So if we have a date and time, whether it's two months, and I also just wanted to let you know, there has been alleged discrimination of the use of disaster funds waged against Wayne County, and you may be hearing more about that.
You did very good, Mr. Wright. Thank you, sir.
Before you leave, sir, sir, before you leave, in layman terms, just tell me, what kind of discrimination are you talking about?
Well, we talking about discrimination. It hasn't been termed, because it can be, it could be, it could be looked at as racial, it can be age. But the main thing I just wanted to let you know as far as discrimination, all this money came into Wayne County because of one thing. A lot of people got flooded, a lot of homes got flooded. And the Community Development Block grant went so far as identified nine different neighborhoods in Wayne County that suffered major to severe damage. Nine neighborhoods. One of those neighborhoods had 9.5% of the severe damage out of that, out of those nine, but ended up having appropriated 70% of the funds. And just to be clear, I'm talking about seven springs. It had 9.5% of the flood damage as far as severe to major, but had 70% with the $700,000. And I looked around at some of your proposals where you talked about a sewer, $2 million for sewer, $2 million for a gym out at Herman Park. And when you look at the statistics and the data, those areas where you want to put the gym wasn't identified as part of being one of the major and severe areas, neighborhoods that was damaged. So when I talk about discrimination, discrimination is just making a conscious choice that you're going to spend your resource and money over here in this neighborhood, even though the most worst-off and flooded was over here in these neighborhoods. That's discrimination. And I don't, and I don't know if the council has done it intently or didn't know all the different things that's involved in that, in the explanation or what has happened, but it's patently wrong. You can't have a neighborhood that got most of the damage and getting none of the money, and a neighborhood that had little damage or no damage getting most of the money. It's something patently wrong. So you can call it age discrimination. These are all minority neighborhoods, so one can call it race discrimination. There's an old people that was identified in one of these neighborhoods, so you can call it old age discrimination. I try not to put a label on it. I just said discrimination. But discrimination of any type is wrong, and in some cases, it can be deemed illegal. And I just thought you, as city council members, need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak in the public? All right, we're going to close this public hearing. Our public comment period, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda you had discussed earlier consists of items H through O. Beginning your consent agenda, items H through O.
Move to adopt the consent agendas item H through O.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
No, ma'am.
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have items requiring individual action, CU-118 SWR Properties, and that was presented last time. If Councilmember Foster had asked if we put it off for two weeks, unless anybody has any questions, I don't, we don't need to re-present it. What is the flavor of the council on this one?
Move to adopt. Move to adopt.
Second.
Is the motion to adopt in a second? All those who favor, raise your right hand.
You, yes, we want, we voted that we approve the site, and you just approved it.
No, no. Just because I pull my hand down, I ask for clarification. Wait, hold, wait a minute.
All right, we'll start all of them. All those who are in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Why are we starting over if we already voted one time?
Exactly.
I mean, you have to pay attention. I mean, it's not, you don't...
All those...
I was trying to speak, and all I was doing was ask for clarification if he was going to speak or not. He did speak, I withdrew my hand to speak.
You withdrew your hand?
Okay.
But after he made his motion, I seconded it, and then you raised your hand to vote, yes, correct? I mean, that's the way it went down. I don't know if we need to watch the videotape or something.
Are all those opposed to the motion, raise your right hand.
Why are we voting two times? We've already voted.
Because I want to clarify the vote, that's why.
God, who's messing with y'all? God.
The motion fails, and the concrete plant is denied. All right. So next, we have city manager report?
No report, Mayor, Council.
City attorney, city don't hear nothing, do report. I've got a resolution real quick. Resolution expresses appreciation for service rendered by Linwood Battle as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 30 years. Whereas Linwood Battle retires on April 1, 2018, he is Equipment Operator II with the Sanitation Division within the Public Works Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than 30 years of service. Whereas Linwood began his career on March 2, 1988, as a Labor One with the Public Works Department. Whereas on October 19, 1988, Linwood was promoted to Utilities Maintenance Worker One with Public Works Department. And whereas on February 1, 1989, Linwood was promoted to Equipment Operator II with the Public Works Department, he has served to his retirement. Whereas Linwood has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro are expressing to Linwood Battle their deep appreciation and gratitude for service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor, the city council, the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Linwood's tenure with the City of Goldsboro. Number two, we offer Linwood our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this after the 19th day of March 2018. Offer this for adoption.
Do to adopt. Second.
Any discussion? All who favor raise your right hand. Resolution passes. We go to...
Mayor, can I mention one thing?
Sure.
We can bring it back, but on your item, your action item that you voted two to four against, if you, to do it right, we do need an order to deny. We can bring that back to a future meeting, or you can do it this evening.
No, I think we do it tonight and be, inhale it.
Okay, then I make a motion to adopt an order denying the conditional use permit as the proposed use does not satisfy the general conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those who favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, same. Motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move to council member comments. Councilmember Williams, first.
Just want to make sure that all the families that have children, families that don't have children, that they go to the city's website and they apply for a summer youth job. We still have time up until April 6. You can go to Community Affairs and application is available there. Also, our city is supposed to be trying to build this city economically. How can we do that when we stop businesses and companies and people from creating jobs? We must do better.
Councilmember Broadway?
No comments, sir.
Councilmember Aicup?
No comment.
Councilmember Foster?
First, I want to make sure what we just did was legal, because we had a vote first, and then the mayor changed that. So I want to make sure the lawyer, that's legal. It's perfectly legal what he did, right?
I'll have to, I can't give you the exact answer about whether or not the intent of Mr. Ham was, if that's what you're asking. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, because we, we made them, Mr. Williams made a motion, I seconded it. The mayor said we were voting on it. He raised his hand clearly, and then we go back and we changed our entire vote. So I want to make sure that you, as our attorney, that we're covered, just in case of any kind of lawsuit or anything comes up in the near future.
Well, you're covered in that way because Ms., Councilmember Ham had clarified his intent was to try to ask a question as opposed to vote, and then...
Even though it was after the motion and after the mayor said that we were voting, he still was raising his hand to ask the question.
But I think during the time of the vote, he retract his hand and said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not trying to vote for that."
Okay.
And then later, there was a motion made to adopt the order denying the conditional use permit.
Okay. So I've been saying, once we watch, because I'm, hopefully, I'm going to watch this, and if we see anything different, I just want to make sure that this is legal and ethical, what happened during this meeting. So, but my second comment would be, I don't understand how the, the homeless shelter for women, I do agree we need that in this city, but over a year ago, I came before the board about changing the requirements for special population housing, and if that, if that, if, if the women's battered shelter falls under special population housing, I can't understand how it even got to a point of even coming to this board, because our ordinance has already stated that you have to be within a certain distance. It has to be outside of a certain distance. I tried to get that changed. The board voted that no, because we do need more special population housing in Goldsboro, because we have one of the largest mental health populations in the state, but that was denied. So I'm trying to figure out how this got all the way to this point of us even having to talk about it or even got to the planning board at all, because it should have been denied just off the fact of the location from being that close to another location. But we'll get into that, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ham?
No comment.
I do just want to take a minute. This past Friday, we had the Human Relations Dinner, and I couldn't be there. Councilmember Ham served for me, and so I appreciate you doing that. I understand you did a really good job. And Chico, I understand y'all had a really good turnout, a really good, so I appreciate the Human Relations folks working hard to make that happen. I think that that's a really important thing, and to have that many people show up on a Friday night's a good thing. So I appreciate if you would pass that on to the folks on that committee, we think. With that, no further business. We stand adjourned.